I call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Can I have a motion to certify closed session, please?
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board while in closed session discussed only public business, matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Give a second, please. Any discussion? It's been, the motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Soza, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Onby.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. Closed session has been certified. Ms. Soza, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers.
Aye, here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Ms. Onby.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here. Mrs. Young is unable to join us this evening, but she is here in spirit and regrets that she's unable to attend. So, that brings us to item 3.02, approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the agendas presented.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Soza, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Onby.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. All right, that brings us to item 4.01, announcements and superintendents' reports. Dr. Heron.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Tonight, I'm pleased to announce that the Pathways Project at Warhol High School has been awarded the Association of Teacher Educators of Virginia School-University Partnership Award for 2017. As you know, the partnership between WJCC and the College of William &amp; Mary has been an integral component of this program from the start, and this award recognizes our combined efforts to innovate the high school experience for 21st century students. Congratulations to Dr. Carroll, the staff at Warhol, and our partners at the College of William &amp; Mary. Lafayette High School's student-led program, BOLT, that stands for Being Outstanding Leaders Together Against Drugs and Alcohol, recently hosted an event open to all Peninsula middle and high school students and parents to discuss the effects of drugs and alcohol abuse. BOLT's focus is educating young minds on the effects of drugs and alcohol. This program is made possible through a grant funded by the Virginia Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. Matoka Elementary recently celebrated its 10th anniversary. Students, parents, current staff, and the originals, staff members who've been at the school since its opening, all celebrated enjoying, by enjoying a birthday cake, buying a time capsule for future generations to uncover, and posing for a drone photo, photo of the entire student body and staff. You can see this photograph on the Matoka and Division webpages. Families of children who will be five by September 30th, 2017, can register for kindergarten beginning May 5th. All WJCC elementary schools will register kindergarteners who will be the class of 2030, beginning at 9:30 a.m. on that day. Please visit wjccschools.org for more information. And finally, the spring concert season is in full force. Check wjccschools.org for the latest in fine arts performances by our talented students. Those are all of the announcements I have this evening, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Ms. Onby.
Yes, just wanted to give a quick update to the 21st Century, 21st Century Learning Committee. I attended that on March 28th. New officers were elected to that committee. Liz Parker gave a VDOE update. There are amendments to the CTE regs, starting next, no, starting in 2018, so impacting current 7th graders, who will be the class of 2022. The state has reduced the number of required verified credits to graduate from 6 to 4. This allows for more flexibility with the delivery of content, so we can be creative and have internships as opposed to seat time, less of a focus on SOLs. What this means is that in short order, all school divisions across the state will be aligning their graduation requirements, so that's coming down the pike. With the new state regs and profile of graduate, we'll see more exposure to CTE at lower levels, so even starting in elementary school, which is really exciting, students will be exposed to professions. And so, at every level, students will have an idea of workforce development. There has been a slight uptick in the number of New Horizons applications for this year, so as, as of that meeting on the 28th, there were about 100 applications, so I don't know what the yield will be, but there was a slight uptick there. The next meeting is on April 25th, and the focus of that meeting will be on the Perkins Grant and the annual report to our, to our board.
Ms. Onby.
Yep. I just wanted to update everyone on the fact that we've had a Williamsburg James City County Foundation survey for the grant. It was out on the website, the WJCC Systems website, to try to garner information about the grant process for next year, and we have 139 responses, which I think is really incredible. And I've built the report, I've sent it to Dr. Owen and the WJCC, Dr. Heron, I'm sorry, and the WJCC Foundation members, so I think they're going to get some good information out of it. It should be Dr. Owen. Dr. Owen.
Dr. Beers.
Yes. It was my pleasure to attend the Hunter Rhodes Educational Advisory Committee meeting down at WHRO in Norfolk, and I was very pleased to introduce, although everybody already knew her, our new superintendent at the meeting, and she received a browsing, round of applause. There, the, WHRO is incredibly busy and clearly has been identified across the country as one of the premier educational TV facilities. All that they've done, their online courses, I'm just going to mention a couple of things that came up. Their education report is on the WHRO website, and if you want more information about those or to see some others that I just don't have time to mention, I would urge you to take a look. It is, it is a real treasure for us to have an operation like that. And keep in mind, again, that it is our school districts that actually own WHRO, so it's an incredible partnership and has been going on for many, many years. Couple of things. They officially launched the Batten Environmental Education Initiative with a $3 million gift that they got from Jane Batten. That includes community outreach, student activities around environmental education, Sea Level Rise Initiative, the use of the STEM van. They have also, one of the other things is they have these vans, they have these programs that go around the school districts, and one of them is the WHR Raising Readers Van, which recently visited James River Elementary School. The new PBS Kit 24/7 Broadcast and Streaming Service has been launched and it's available. And of course, they helped to sponsor the Virginia Pilot Spelling Bee Live, and I think I can mention our winners, is it all right? Because I didn't know if there would be something coming up later, but we had three winners from Williamsburg, Anna Zhang from Berkeley Middle School, Erin Keener from Hornsby Middle School, Liberty Rojas from Tuano Middle School. And again, there are so many other things that they are involved in, and they continue to be an excellent provider of professional development opportunities for classroom teachers. Okay?
Thank you, Dr. Beers.
You're welcome.
Are there any other announcements?
Madam Chair, I have two things. One, just to add on to what Ms. Hummel said, I received the annual report for the WJCC Schools Foundation, thought it was very well done, and thought it did a great job explaining where the money has gone to, and I thought that was really good. Also, at the last New Horizons Board meeting, we had one of our students, I'm going to butcher their last name, but I'm going to try, Stephen Schamenger, who's a Governor's School student from Jamestown High School, talked about his experience at the Governor's School. He did an internship at Jefferson Lab, and his, his final paper was Frequentist Analysis of Rosenbluth's Data, A Study of Proton Form Factor Measurement. Dr. Heron was there, saw her explain the paper.
Maybe later.
It's actually too obvious, so we won't talk about that. Anyway, the, I thought that was really very impressive and well represented by the WJCC there.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Anything else?
All right. That brings us to item 5.01, citizens' comments. I do not believe we have any speakers cards. Okay, great. Then we will move on to item 6.01, approval of purchase for middle school technology refresh. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As part of this year's budget, the school board has included funds to refresh student and teacher-use laptops and desktops at the middle school level, and Mr. Landers is here to present what is being purchased and answer any questions you may have. Mr. Landers.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron. This evening, we're asking for your consideration and approval of purchasing student-use desktops and teacher laptops per school board policy DJ that requires board approval for purchases in excess of $100,000. The cost for this refresh is included in the school board's approved fiscal year 2017 budget in the Technology Cost Center, and the cost to purchase these devices is approximately The purchase will provide 270 student-use lab, desktops and monitors, and 228 teacher-use laptops, and this does include the expanded three-year service and warranty. And thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Landers?
Just, Mr. Landers, just to clear, just to make sure we're clear on this, this is on the current year 1617 budget, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Landers, could you share with us a little bit about the process that you go through to solicit staff and teacher input to decide what to purchase?
Certainly. Actually, we just completed one of our work groups. It kicked off in December, included teacher representatives from every level, as well as some of our computer resource teachers, an assistant principal, a building principal, some of our curriculum coordinators, all is, all in all, there were 14 members of that work group. They, we came together, I believe, four times over the three or four-month period. We brought in demo devices that they were able to look at, try out. The teachers actually took them back to the buildings with them for a period of about four weeks each. They were able to then share that with other teachers in their buildings, get their input, and bring that feedback back to the work group.
Colleagues, because this is within our adopted budget, and it's a cooperative contract, I was curious if it would be okay to put this on the consent agenda at the next meeting? Because there's no, is that, okay? Yep, all right.
I don't know, I'd rather just vote on it.
Okay, that's fine. Then we will just vote on it. All right. Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. That brings us to 6.02, local special education plan, Title 6B flow-through funds. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Burroughs is here to present the special education annual plan, and she will give, take us through your presentation this evening, telling us all about this year's application.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board. Dr. Heron, I bring you greetings from the Department of Special Education once again, and I'm delighted to be here to present our proposed local special education plan for 2017, 2018. I believe you have the packets in front of you, so I'm not going to do a formal PowerPoint presentation. I know they were submitted to board docs, but I can talk you through it if you don't have them in front of you. The application pertaining to this plan is a regulatory requirement under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act of 2004. Accordingly, the federal funds provided to local education agencies under this plan must only be used for the provision of special education and related services to children with disabilities. The amount of federal funds that are allocated to school divisions is based off of a formula that is not necessarily shared with us, but it does take into consideration historical funding, school enrollment, and poverty level of the locality. As required by the guidelines, this plan was shared with our Special Education Advisory Committee on February 9th, 2017. Following your approval and submission to the Virginia Department of Education, this plan will become effective on July 1st, 2017, and it runs for 27 months. All funds that will be allocated in this plan must be spent by September 30th, 2019. You'll notice that there are two separate pots of funding. Section 611 pertains to school-age students with disabilities, so kindergarten through 12th grade, and section 619 is specific to our preschool students with disabilities. As advised by the Virginia Department of Education, the plan before you is based off of the current award amount for 2016-17. Section 611's amount was $2,212,000, no, that's not correct, I wish it were, $2,012,416. And section 619's amount was $21,852. So remember, 611 is for K through 12, and 619 is for preschool. The preliminary funding allocations have not been released yet. They're historically released around the May timeframe, but even once they're released, they're just that, preliminary, so they're subject to change a couple of times before they become final in October. Both funding streams, as noted in the plan, are used solely to cover salaries and benefits of special education personnel. So, section 611 pays the salary and benefits of 20 special education teachers, 4.22 speech pathologists, which is actually five individuals, however, two of those individuals are full-time, one other individual's a part-time employee, and two other speech pathologists. 0.86% of their contract is covered with this grant. The remaining 14% is covered by local funds. And then, 20% of the salary for the K8 English Language Arts Coordinator, because we do work very collaboratively with her on literacy needs for students with disabilities. Section 619, that $21,852, just goes to cover a portion of the salary and benefits of the nurse at the needs center at Norwich. I want to call your attention to just a couple of special provisions in the plan. As you'll see on page 10, it speaks to something called a proportionate set aside. And simply put, the law requires that local education agencies must spend a proportionate amount of federal funds on providing special education and related services, including direct services, to parentally-placed private school and home-school children with disabilities. Our proportionate set-aside amount is $43,184.89. This information is based off of, as of October of 2016, a student count for students with disabilities of 1,587, and then of that, 35 of those students were disabilities who were either parentally placed in a private school by parent choice or home-school. This is a little, a decrease from last year. Last year, we had to set aside almost six, over $60,000, because there were 49 students who were placed in, in private schools or home schools. Page 9 speaks to a fairly significant provision in the application, because it specifically puts a mandate on local and state funding, and it's called maintenance of effort. And the law says that this regulation requires school divisions to spend at least the same amount of local or local-plus-state dollars for a current school year on the delivery of special ed and related services as were spent from the same source for the preceding fiscal year. So, in other words, we have to either maintain or increase the amount that we spend in local and state funds, and there are four ways that we can meet the eligibility requirement for this. And this is one of those things where we really have to rely on the expertise of our finance department. Actually, the plan requires that it be confirmed by our fiscal friends in Ms. Burda's office, so they do a great job helping us out with that. As you'll see, in 2016-17, local dollars were $14,598,312.59. Per capita or per student, local was about $9,000, and per capita, local-plus-state was $11,608. We met that requirement because we exceeded in two areas. What you see before you is what's based off of the proposed budget. So, in comparison, local dollars for the 17-18 school year are $15,453,856.28. That's an increase from the $14 million I previously referenced. And then, per capita for local is only about $9,000, so we're about $78 shy there, and we don't meet it for local nor local-plus-state. But we do meet it because we exceed the previous year based on what's being proposed. In all, I know I've said a lot of numbers, and I don't know what you have in front of you, but I want to just give you just the big picture of all of this, and you're very fortunate there's not a quiz on this following my presentation, so I want to just bring it full circle and leave you with a clear picture of what it costs to fund special education programs, what it costs to fund our program. So, the total amount based for the upcoming year is an estimate of $21,740,503, okay? If you add section 611 and 619, those amounts come to $2,43,268. That's about 9.4% of that $21 million. If you look at the state share, their share is $4,243,379. That's about 19.5%. Then you look at the local share, $15,453,856.28, 71%. So, in essence, when we talk about special education with the inception of the law back in 1975, Congress said, yes, we will fully fund special education. Full funding for them met up to 40%. They said, we need a little bit of time to get there. They had a five-year plan, so by 1981, they were supposed to be funding special education at 40%. It's 2017, I'll just share with you what we're getting in Williamsburg James City County. So, the reality is that the locality is picking up the lion's share. I talked a little bit about the annual plan and the number of staff and personnel that it covers. In terms of 6B, the annual plan, they're slated to cover 20 special education teachers. Well, we have 113, so the locality and state pick up the 93. In terms of teacher assistance, the annual plan covers six. We have 110. There's 104 left to be picked up by the locality and state. So I could go on and on about that, but I think the bigger picture is, we're very appreciative of the $2 million that we get. It does only go to cover a sliver of the special education personnel that provides the services for our students, but we're very fortunate to be able to do what we have with, for our students with disabilities. Any questions?
Anyone have questions? No. Would you send those numbers to us?
I will gladly, yes.
That would be lovely to have on hand.
Yes.
Thank you for the presentation. I've been here for a long time. That's the best presentation where I understood what was going, so I appreciate the presentation there.
Okay. Thank you.
That brings us to item 6.03, award a contract for invitation for bid number 17-11449, repair and replacement of the Norwich Elementary School roof.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is one of the projects funded or approved in the fiscal year 17CIP, and Mr. Snipes is here to present the information this evening.
Good evening, Dr. Heron, school board members, Madam Chair. It's that time of year again where operations come to you to ask, to tell you about our FYCIP items. So, here we go. This, this project was recommended by the WJCC staff and approved in the fiscal year CIP, and the total project cost budgeted was $613,000. The design for this project was done by Guernsey Tingle at a price of $41,600, and involves repair work to the existing metal roof, replacement of the low-slope roof of the gymnasium, and restoration of the low-slope roof over the kindergarten and cafeteria areas. The project is scheduled for completion prior to the start of the 2017-2018 school year. Bid alternates for the project are to remove and replace all snow guards and to add new snow, new roof drains at the kindergarten area roof. Invitation for bid was issued on March 7th with a due date of March 28th, 2017. The total base bid shall be used to determine the most responsive and responsive bidder. And as a reminder, this is a placeholder agenda item, and the remaining project budget is in the amount of $571,400. At the time the item was prepared, the bid opening had not taken place, and we are asking at the next meeting that you vote and approve, vote to approve this project.
Any questions for Mrs. Snipes?
So, the actual vendor will be on next, at our next meeting?
The actual vendor will be at your next meeting, and again, this is an IFB, so it's the total base bid of the lowest and most responsive bidder.
I'm just confused about the, the numbers that you were giving. I can't find them on this detail here, so maybe it's just me, because these numbers are, they don't match. Am I not in the?
The project cost for the CIP was $613,000. That was approved in the fiscal year 17CIP. Design was $41,600 to Guernsey Tingle, and I believe they're here tonight.
No, this is me. I was on 6.04.
Okay.
So, I was like going, this does not match. Okay.
And if you wanted to know, we do have an aerial of the roof to, if you wanted to see what that looked like as well.
That was posted on board docs as well.
Yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Snipes about this? Because I think he's going to stick around a little bit.
Yep.
Okay, that brings us to item 0.6.04, award a contract for invitation for bid number 17-11450, construction services for Norwich Elementary School HVAC replacement, which Ms. Hummel has already previewed, so.
That's a little more expensive.
It's just a...
Good evening, Dr. Heron, School Board members, Madam Chair. It's that time of year again where operations come to you to ask, to tell you about our FYCIP items. So, here we go. This, this project was recommended by the WJCC staff and approved in the fiscal year CIP. And the total project cost budgeted was six hundred and thirty, six hundred and thirteen thousand. The design for this project was done by Guernsey Tingle at a price of forty-one thousand, six hundred dollars, and involves repair work to the existing metal roof, replacement of the low slope roof of the gymnasium, and restoration of the low slope roof over the kindergarten and cafeteria areas. The project is scheduled for completion prior to the start of the two thousand, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school year. Bid alternates for the project are to remove and replace all snow guards and to add new snow, new roof drains at the kindergarten area roof. Invitation for bid was issued on March seventh, with the due date of March twenty-eighth, twenty-seventeen. The total base bid shall be used to determine the most responsive and responsive bidder. And as a reminder, this is a placeholder agenda item, and the remaining project budget is in the amount of five hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred dollars. At the time the item was prepared, the bid opening had not taken place, and we are asking at the next meeting that you vote and approve, vote to approve this project.
Any questions for Mrs., Mr. Snipes?
So, the actual vendor will be on next, at our next meeting?
The actual vendor will be at your next meeting, and again, this is an IFB, so it's the total base bid of the lowest and most responsive bidder.
I'm just confused about the, the numbers that you were giving. I can't find them on this detail here, so maybe it's just me, because these numbers are, they don't match, am I not, in the?
The project cost for the CIP was six hundred and thirteen thousand. That was approved in the fiscal year seventeen CIP. Design was forty-one thousand, six hundred, the Guernsey Tingle, and I believe they're here tonight.
No, this is me. I was on six point zero four.
Okay.
So, I was like going, this does not match, okay.
And if you wanted to know, we do have an aerial of the roof to, if you wanted to see what that looked like as well.
That was posted on board docs as well. Any other questions for Mr. Snipes about this, because I think he's going to stick around a little bit?
Yep.
Okay, that brings us to item zero points, six point zero four, award a contract for invitation for bid number seventeen dash one one four five zero, construction services for Norwich Elementary School HVAC replacement, which Ms. Hamel has already previewed, so.
It's a little more expensive.
It's just a little more expensive. Again, this was approved in your fiscal year seventeen CIP, and this project was recommended by WJCC staff. The total project cost budgeted was three million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars. The project was recommended by staff, because the current HVAC system at Norwich was installed in nineteen ninety-five and is beyond its useful life. Mosley Architects, which was, you provided a award to them back in October, to design this was in the amount of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars. The design did include the renovation of the entire HVAC system, replacing the cafeteria and gym air handling units, replacing the classroom outside air units, replacing the closed circuit cooling tower, replacing the VRF, which is the variable refrigerant flow. In addition, if bids are favorable, it will allow for a bid alternate for attic insulation. The invitation for bid was issued on March seventh, with the due date of March thirtieth. Again, this is an IFB, so the total base bid of the lowest and most responsive bidder will be selected. And as a reminder, again, this is a placeholder agenda item, and we're asking for your vote next, at the next board meeting on April eighteenth.
Questions about this project? Okay. Brings us to item six point zero five, award a contract for request for proposal number seventeen dash one one five two one, design services for the Lafayette High School Roof Replacement Project.
Unlike the other awards, this is just a little different. This is not to repair, replace, or construct. This is for the design for the Lafayette Roof Replacement. Partial project funding for this, for the Lafayette Roof was five hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars, which was approved in your fiscal year seventeen CIP. That was just for design. The roof part of this project was, as you've seen, is in part of our liaison meeting, is a discussion that we will receive back later on. This was part of the, this project was recommended by the Facility Condition Index and the WJCC staff, because the current roof was installed in nineteen ninety-seven and is also beyond its useful life. And after thorough investigation, we found multiple leaks, some underlayment, some flashing, some drainage, and some downspouts needed to be taken care of, which you've heard about in the past. The design consultant will provide the design services to prepare bid-ready construction documents. And unlike an IFB, this proposal will be selected based on criteria and scored based on that criteria. That criteria is understanding the project scope, the depth and breadth of the experience of the firm, the personnel, the demonstrated ability of that firm to provide the services and the experience of the firm in completing similar projects. A request for proposal was sent out on March sixth, with a return date of April eleventh, which was, you know, pretty close. And again, this was an RFP, so you will find a link to it on the, on the page, so you can look at it if you like. And as a reminder, again, this is a placeholder agenda item, that we'll be asking for you to vote on April eighteenth.
Questions about this? Well, actually, is there, if, if there's a lag between design services and then actual execution of the project, does that negatively impact the project as a whole, if, you know, if, I mean?
If the design is held up, that's what you're asking?
Well, right, or if?
It's usually a year for design.
Okay.
So, we typically haven't had a lag in design, but if there is a delay in design, yes, that would cause the project to be held up.
Thank you. Item six point zero six, contract award for the HVAC Energy Management Controls Project.
This, this Energy Management Control Project was also recommended in the Facility Condition Index and was budgeted for the FY seventeen CIP. The project budget was a hundred and eight thousand dollars. And what that does, it will allow us to replace the main controllers, so that we can allow staff to remotely control and monitor heating, ventilation, and air conditioning in our facilities. The WJCC staff, Ms. Burda, and I collaborated with WJCC, with JCC Purchasing to identify a vendor under a cooperative contract. Vendors under that contract, of course, are vetted through a procurement process, have competitive pricing, and have demonstrated a history of satisfactory performance. Centennial Contractors was contacted, and they submitted a proposal, which is within the approved budget. Again, at the next meeting, we will be asking you to vote on that cooperative contract.
That brings us, thank you very much, Mr. Snipes, I appreciate it. That brings us to item six point zero seven, request for use of facilities for Unity Christian Church of Virginia at James River Elementary. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, Mr. Snipes will bring information on this request for facility use.
According, that's okay. According to school board policy KG, the community use of school facilities, we rent out buildings based on that fee and based on that policy. The church, Unity Christian Church of Virginia, wants to rent James River Elementary till approximately October of twenty-eight, twenty-seventeen. The church is a reckon, is recognized by the Restoration Christian Church of Virginia. They provided us with the appropriate documentation, which includes insurances and other items available for review in our office. Mr. Stutt, who is the principal at James River, has approved this request, and so we will be bringing this forward to you for approval at the next meeting.
Any questions? So, the cooperative contract items, we're going to vote on separately, but this one, I was curious if it would be okay to put in the consent agenda at the next meeting? Six point oh two? I'd rather vote on that. So, is everybody okay if we put six point zero seven on the consent agenda? Okay. We got one, got one.
This is cooking iron even.
That's right. Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes.
Okay, that brings us to item seven point zero one, redistricting and school start times. And before I toss, toss it to Dr. Heron, I'd just like to note that the purpose of this conversation is to help the administration best understand how to meet the board's needs as we negotiate this redistricting process. So, we really don't need to make hard and fast decisions tonight. This is really beginning of a discussion that will probably be on our agenda, every agenda from now until the foreseeable future. So, anyway, so with that, I'll toss it to you, Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Obviously, with the opening of James Bear Middle School next year, WJCC Public Schools must adjust attendance boundaries to accommodate a fourth middle school. And so, the purpose of this agenda item tonight is to allow the board to begin that discussion and talk about the extent to which you wish to redistrict, the criteria you may wish to use, and any other factors surrounding redistricting. And we provided some preliminary information for you, so board, to consider prior to the discussion this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. So, before I, before we begin discussion, I wanted to kind of frame this. I think the first thing, Dr. Heron and her team provided a nice overview of some key points to consider as, as we begin this discussion. But I think, one of the first things I think we need to grapple with and discuss as a group is the scope. Do we want to do middle school? Do we want to do middle school plus high school, or middle school plus elementary, or all three levels? So, I think that's a discussion that then will inform our thinking about the type of consultant we may want to hire, whether that's full service or not, or, or to go with a cooperative contractor or an RFP. And then, then we can start thinking about shaping the criteria for that. But, but I think, I believe, one of the first things we need to talk about is, is just the scope. But I'm open to suggestions, but I was trying to figure out a way to move forward in this conversation in a way that helps Dr. Heron and her team best understand what, what this board is interested in doing. So, with that, I will open up the discussion.
I'll just say, thank you very much, Dr. Heron, for providing this information. I was very surprised to see the numbers when I added in the Bright Beginnings for the elementary schools, to see that it looks like DJ is at seventy-eight percent compared to if you add, like for James River, for instance, if you add the, they're at eighty-seven percent capacity, but then when you add in the, some of their other, let's see. That's Jay Blatton is a hundred and twelve, a hundred and fifteen, Rawlsburg's at a hundred and fifteen percent, right, over? So, that, that seems really like a pretty big variance between a school like Rawlsburg at a hundred and fifteen percent and DJ Montague at seventy-eight percent.
And Mrs. Hamel, if you remember, as part of the budget process in our very first workshop in here, we actually brought to you the suggestion of a fifth site for Bright Beginnings, which would have evened out all of these numbers. And that is certainly one way to bring the elementary schools back into a similar type of capacity. And one of the schools we were suggesting was DJ Elementary. And that was part of the reason for that suggestion, to give the schools some relief next year.
So, it seems to me that when we talk about capacity, there, there are two ways forward. One is through the CIP, which recommended going through, well, I think that was actually through the operating budget, but the idea of building capacity, in that case, by building some play equipment, providing play equipment that would be age-appropriate for Bright Beginnings. And then also in the CIP, there's some expansions of the high school. And so, one way is through the CIP and through capital investment. And the other way, if you do have variance in capacity, where there's space in some schools and not in others, redistricting is a way to alleviate and, and then, at least for a number of years, presumably, save, save money in, in terms of capital investment.
Madam Chair, I think for me, what's most glaring is that DJ Montague is the only school out of fifteen that is below capacity. So, if we're, the recommended capacity is eighty, eighty-five to eighty-eight percent, all of our schools today are there. And going forward, it only goes up. So, DJ is the only school with capacity. So, that to me is just the most glaring. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. There's not universal agreement that optimal capacity is between eighty-five and eighty-eight percent. There are others who feel it can go as high as ninety to ninety-five percent. So, there's just, I just throw that out there. I know that number is in here, but I'm not sure that should totally drive.
So, Dr. Bear's even, even if that percentage, then we have two schools that are under capacity?
Right, I understand that.
Out of fifteen? Only two?
No, I understand that. We probably, yeah, we're, we're not going to get around the growth. And so, it's a real, and one other thing I would say is, redistricting is always a very difficult, highly emotional activity that a district engages in. And I just, for one, hope that we don't go through what we went through in two thousand and ten, because I, I felt that the, the process that was used there was, was incorrect.
Yeah, and I think the process that we used in two thousand and seven was also really poor.
I do support a consultant, and I would probably, and I would probably support somebody who's going to, who looks at everything.
Dr. Heron, do we know, is there a significant cost difference if we're looking at just middle school, which is what, right now, we are, we have to redistrict for middle school? Is there a significant cost difference between that and K-12, or middle and high?
There potentially could be some cost variation between the three, and we, if we go out on an RFP, we could ask for numbers for one level or two level or three. But a lot of the community engagement takes place, whether it's middle school or all, you're still going to have public engagement, and you'll be paying the firm to do. So, a lot of the communications piece surrounding it that comes with full service probably will have to happen regardless of the levels that you choose to, to redistrict.
Building on that, I did speak with Mrs. Young earlier today, and she did express to me an interest in exploring an RFP process that was tiered in nature, where there might be, you know, three, three prices offered. If so, if it's possible to build one, then the board can take into account the cost of the actual process and as it determines scope.
How will the middle school enrollments, I see that for the high percentages now. When Blair is finished, how are those going to change? Can we, even though we don't know where, which one middle school they may go to, which, how would that, they're obviously going to go down.
It's obviously going to significantly reduce each, each of the schools, and I think the purpose of really going through this process is to, to really look at the capacity of each building redistrict, to make them more even across the board, especially at middle school. It, it's the one we don't have a choice in, because the school's coming. And so, that's, that, that will, it's very timely in impacting our numbers.
Well, you know, Jamestown at a hundred and ten percent is bursting.
So, Dr. Heron, if we don't redistrict at the high school, are we looking at trailers at Jamestown?
Yes, that, we actually considered and brought one to the board as part of the budget process this year, and then decided we could survive one more year without one, but we would be adding probably one or two additional exterior classrooms next year, trailers.
Yeah, and we do have exterior classrooms in elementary school.
We, and Berkeley, but middle school is now obviously as well.
But at Matthew Waley, right?
Yes, we do.
Are there any other elementary schools where we have to?
Mr. Snipes, I believe there's only Matthew Waley?
Okay, thank you.
So, Jamestown, over the next eight years, will grow from a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty-two percent? But I look at Lafayette and War Hill, I don't see that same kind of increase. Is it possible that some redistricting among the high schools might impact that increase?
Absolutely, it, it could impact. Again, the numbers don't change a lot for the next three years, but going out from nineteen twenty, nineteen twenty, there's just a steady increase in, in students, well, at all of the schools, but especially at Jamestown.
So, at some, at some point, we would have to do something, either bring in trailers or something?
My assumption is that when we look at transfer requests across district, across, you know, districts, that we're always cognizant of that, we're always aware of the fact that if we have a steady trickle, and maybe it's a trickle, but it's steady trickle to Jamestown over time, is it possible that may be one of the reasons they seem a bit skewed?
We've actually looked at the numbers, and I know Ms. Bujwa has looked at them fairly recently with regard to transfers into Jamestown, and we, we're not approving any at this moment in time, except for those already there. Those already there, and I think they're what's been going through the past few years and years. So, it's, so it's minimal, if at all, but most of our schools are closed to the transfer process because they're full.
And didn't the policy, didn't the policy change on that now?
Ms. Bujwa will invite Ms. Bujwa, so that she, her answer comes into the mic as well. Thank you.
Good evening. Yes, the policy did strengthen the par.
Yes, the policy did strengthen the parameter somewhat. And all of it is very clearly stated that it's based on space and program availability, and that is part of what we look at very closely. And we've actually been looking at, at the capacity numbers, particularly preparing for next year.
Dr. Herron, can you remind us what years you, in our, the CIP that we just adopted, you have the, the three high school expansions and a new middle school? Can you, can you remind us, are they anywhere on this chart?
I don't have them on the chart, but I believe the expansions were two years out from now, design in, Ms. Burda, can you remember?
Twenty nineteen, twenty, and twenty twenty, twenty-one.
Can you say that again?
Nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one. So, nineteen twenty was design, twenty twenty-one.
For all three?
We just generalized as high school expansion.
Okay.
And so, does that expansion, is that just for the cafeterias? What, what does that expansion include?
That would be adding on some classrooms as well. And they're all scheduled for the same timeframe, but obviously, as we come closer and look at numbers, there's the possibility to, to change the dates depending on need.
And are we also looking at the external parties that are at Lafayette High School?
Yes. Yes, that definitely would become my conversation before we would ever expand. In fact, if there's an expansion at Lafayette High School, it would be into that space, remodeled space that already exists, which is much less expensive.
Somewhere, I forget what year it is, but somewhere in the CIP, we envision the need for another elementary school.
Yeah, what year is that?
And I forgot what year that is. But so, when that comes online, some, I think some of these numbers will, but it's, we can't do them all at once. I mean, that's, I get that.
Going back to the high school expansion, so by 2021, we could conceivably have expanded Jamestown to mitigate the one hundred and sixteen percent?
Jamestown would obviously come first for an expansion. In fact, the expansion of the cafeteria is overdue. And obviously, we would place them in the CIP wherever they become needed. And they probably will be staggered rather than all at once, depending on the numbers as they change each year.
And that also assumes that we don't reallocate students that are, might be coming to Jamestown into one of the other two high schools.
Correct.
Because that could also.
That could also impact the numbers, yes, sir.
So, if we redistrict, it's arguable we could delay expansion?
That could be the case. At some point, they're all, if you look at Lafayette and War Hill, they're both over ninety percent already. Eighty-eight, ninety, moving up a couple of years. Lafayette, obviously, is still in the eighty-eights to a certain point. But they're all, they're all fairly full. But yes.
So, potentially, it's a trade-off of having to spend extra money to do expansions or either postpone that for a few years versus redistricting?
And even if you do redistrict minimally from Jamestown to Lafayette, at some point, you're going to have to expand fairly soon after that.
Right.
Which is, makes it a hard decision.
Madam Chair, I was only here for four years at this table, or four months of the last, in the last redistricting. And you get a, you certainly get a different perspective on redistricting when you sit at this table as when you look at it from the outside. It's, it's, it's not a fun process, as Dr. Behrs said. What I would propose that we, that we consider doing, we have to do middle school. And so, I would say as a group that we do middle school, we do the middle school in the one year, implement lessons learned, understand what we, how we could have done it a little bit differently, and then consider doing elementary and high school after that, instead of doing all three levels at the same time. I mean, because you're looking at engagement meetings at all three levels, you're looking at maps for all three levels. It's just, it's, it's a very cumbersome and, as Dr. Behrs also said, emotional process that I think that, I think it would serve us well to, to do the middle school, make sure we understand what the right process was, what we could have done differently. Instead of doing, instead of making all those mistakes at all three levels, do what we have to do, learn, and then go look at, go look at doing it at the high school or the elementary school after that. So, it's, like I said, I was only here for four months, the last one, and that was a lot.
I actually, I actually agree with that. Would I, part of what you said, part I, I don't agree with is, I would, I would really like to be able to say we learn from our past mistakes when it comes to redistricting. And I'm not sure, I'm not totally sure we have. So, and maybe if that, if this were to give us more time to consider that and to really go and look at what were the pitfalls that we saw in the past and what can we do to avoid those in the future? We clearly had to do it with the middle school. It, it's really important to do that. I'm, obviously, I'm, I'm concerned about the capacity. I, I, you know, I, I went to an elementary school and, you know, there were forty-three kids in the class, and it didn't seem to bother, you know, I don't think we were even aware of it. But, but I think with middle and high school, especially today, that's, that's really, that's critical. You can't have, because to me, overcapacity means you have more students in classrooms than you should. So, and I think that, that's a more conservative approach, but I, I just think, now that I think, you know, that I think about it myself, is I would support that. But what, what, I'd like to hear from the superintendent, though. What are, you know, where are you looking at?
I think, Dr. Behrs, the, the most obvious thing is we must do middle school. And I think we all, there's no choice in that, and so, our focus probably should be on that. There's a lot of variables at high school that could come into play in the next two years with our pathways programs, online learning, lots of different things that could impact capacity or the number of students in a building at any given time. If we end up with a growing program where students are spending the afternoon over at TNCC doing, you know, college classes, that could impact capacity as well. So, there's a lot of things happening at the high school level that will impact, and we really don't know how at this moment in time. So, there is some, some reason perhaps to, to be hesitant.
I'm, I mean, we have, I, I think that the capacity numbers suggest that there would be benefit from doing all, all three levels. I'm reluctant to, to support that in the elementary school level because eventually, we're going to have to build a new school, and that's going to shake everything up. But in the high school, we're just going to expand three high schools. So, to me, I think that there's benefit in leveling the attendance, the capacity out so that then we can plan to institute those expansions and, and ease capacity at all three schools. And, and so, that's, that's sort of where I'm leaning when I look at the disparity in the capacity over the next several years. That said, you know, if we can, if we can structure an RFP that allows for, you know, a tiered, a tiered pricing, we can go into that clear-out. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Kelly, about learning from our mistakes, but I, what's one board member might view as a mistake, I mean, I've, I've heard the word mistake a couple times tonight, and I'm reluctant, I, I wasn't in this chair when it was done previously, so I don't know what was going through people's minds at that time. And so, I, I think people make the best decisions that they can at the time with the best information that they have available. I think we were all, have been involved in redistricting in some way, shape, or form in the community, albeit not in this chair, which is certainly a different experience. But I would like to seriously consider redistricting at the middle and high school level. Not completely sold on that, but having attended the, you know, James City County budget meeting last night and having participated in the joint meeting, we know that, you know, there's no state money coming for capital. We're, we're almost exclusively reliant on, on James City County, who's been very clear about what their projections are for capital. And with those constraints in the next, you know, five to ten years, if we can alleviate space concerns at the high school level to, to delay capital investment in, at the high school level, I think it's worth considering, at least worth, worth thinking about. And, and to Dr. Herron's point about the, I, I feel strongly that this process, whether it's the middle or middle and high or more, involve robust community input opportunities. And that's, that's expensive. And, well, I should say it's not cheap. And so, if we're going to do that, I'd rather do that all at once and get the global perspective rather than doing it twice, because then I think we're spending that money twice. And it is tumultuous, and if we're gonna, and emotional, if we're going to do that, I, I would hate to do it twice.
Those audiences are different from middle school to high school.
Yeah, well, I.
Because you don't, you don't have the same boundaries from middle school and high school. Kids don't come in nice, neat little twenty-person packets from, in anywhere. And, I mean, those are, those are some of the painful lessons I learned in the first, in those four months that I was here. And I just think it would do these, the, the seven people on this board, the members of the administration, because very few of them were here in the last time, last time as well, if we just did the middle school, understood how that worked, and then, and then do high school and elementary school later. Because if you look at the high schools, there's no real appreciable difference in the capacities throughout for a couple of years or so. So, I mean, we could still do that next year, if you will.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry. Well, the, on page two, when we are looking at the feeder thing, the feeder, I think if we consider the high school redistricting at the same time as the middle school redistricting, we could perhaps solve what I think is kind of a problem with the, I have no problem if seventy-four percent of the kids from Berkeley, this, what is the breakup here? I'm looking at the high school one. But when there's twelve kids that go from Tuana Middle School to Lafayette, and two-hundred-and-seventy-three kids from Tuana Middle School go to War Hill, that seems kind of unfair to those Tuana Middle, the twelve. The same, you see what I mean? If there's any way that we could at least look at the high school with regard to that feeder, I don't know if that would be feasible.
That is also a one-year snapshot. So, the next year, it could be two, or it could be twenty-four, or it could be thirty. So, it's all, it's, they don't, there's not the same number of kids in each neighborhood in the same grade and the same, so it's all just a snapshot of what you get right there.
I know, but twelve versus two-hundred-and-seventy-three?
But what was, what was the year before? What was the year after?
I don't know. I mean, maybe that would be, is there an average that we could get over the last five years that gives us some kind of a feeling?
That's just all the complications you get with redistricting, which is why I think that it's important that we do, one, understand how that process worked and then move forward because it's, it's, there's a lot of those little factors in play. I just think that it's, it's best that we.
I think, you know, and, and I think part of the issue has been in, in the past is, and it was a question I've asked perfected board members, is what if you're in a situation where, where we are going to redistrict and your child is not going to go to the school that you want him to run that your child to go to? How are you going to vote when we come to redistricting? And unfortunately, that has happened in the past. And it just, it's, it's a tough, it's like, you know, and it's easy for me to say because my kids are grown. But I cert, I, you know, I, I certainly appreciate what that, what that must feel like. But there, there comes a time when it's like, you have, it has to be a board decision, and it's, 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 it's not, maybe it's not the greatest thing for my kid, but for a much larger number of, of students, and, you know, that's sort of, that's a little altruistic, but what the heck?
Well, I'd also like to add that in, in my thinking, it's not about, it's not about attendance zones next year or the year after, but it's attendance zones over the next five years or between now and when we redistrict. And so, it is a tumultuous process. And there are, you know, people who have in their mind's eye where their kids are going to go, but in a, in a, in a, in a growing school division, one cannot anticipate realistically that their kid is going to go exactly where they thought, because if you're growing, there's going to be shifts and changes. And that's, that's part of the benefit of being in a, in a school division, where all the schools are great. So, but to your point, Dr. Behrs, I, I agree with you. I think that we have to make a decision as the board for the best, for what happens to kids, not next year or the year after, but three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten years down the road. I think that's the thinking and, and that we need to embark on.
Let me just throw another thought out. And it might be temporary, it might actually be a permanent solution, you know, for, for a longer period of time. Just do some spot redistricting with, with the high schools if you want to make that seem more, even out, even, even the student population out.
Well, I think, again, to Dr. Herron's point, with, without a crystal ball, we don't know how the TNCC specialty program is going to impact our schools or how the pathways expansion is going to impact the high school level. We're delaying the pathways expansion at Lafayette and, and Jamestown so we can experience the lesson learned. So, in, in a year, we'll have a better idea of what that will look like, and we can implement those programs robustly at Jamestown and Lafayette. And so, there may be some shift and some movement. Just something to consider. There are some, there is some flex, we do have some flexibility in, in trying to mitigate growth at, at the high school level.
Would it at least be worth having kind of an, if we're hiring the consultant to have some maps for us to just even look at, consider, you know, just put on a back burner if we decide as a group, we're not ready to go there, but at least we've got kind of some preliminary advice?
Can we do that to the public? I mean, I think, I think as a, as a board, we need to decide, so the public needs to know that we're going to redistrict at the middle or middle and high. I, I think it's unfair to the public to say, we're not sure. And once we look at the maps, then we'll decide if we're going to do both.
Well, see, the map's data, that's data. I, I need to know.
See what I'm saying? Like, if we're, if we're going to, if we're going to get feedback.
But you need to know what the numbers are from the various regions around the community.
But it's entirely.
And it's not.
Let's pretend we decide to redistrict at the high school level, and the maps turn out similarly to where they are, but just shift some things. I mean, that's possible.
So, we do, we can do maps before public comment. When, when do we engage the community? What, like, what is the process? I don't remember. I've been through it twice, and I don't remember. Like, don't we engage the community first?
Sure.
And then draw the maps?
Right.
So, to Jim's point, it is a very emotional process. So, I would hate to get people all emotionally overwrought and then say, oh, we're not really, we're not going to change the high we're not going to change the high schools now.
Well, the last, in 2007 or '08, which was the Community Task Force, there was a lot of community discussion on criteria and a big survey that went out, and there were, in my opinion, really a lot of problems with that whole methodology. And then maps were drawn, and then again, opportunity for public comment. So my, my recommendation is that the school board members, as part of our responsibility, according to our policies, we set criteria, we decide together criteria, and then public commentary is after the maps are presented and they're out there, and that's when we get the feedback from the community. But that's just because of the lessons learned from 2007.
So if we went with that process, and we gathered the data, we had the criteria, we gathered the data, we looked at the maps, and then if the maps brought us the change that we want, we could then present it to the public. If the maps changed very little, then we wouldn't ask for community input?
Have to have, you need to have public. I'm inclined to rely on the consultants to help guide us through a process that works, you know. Presumably, they've been through this, you know, we'd get RFPs back, or the staff would get RFPs back, that would present a timeline and a process that has been successful elsewhere. And so I would be inclined to rely on whatever the professionals suggest.
And they're only gonna give a recommendation.
Right.
That's not the plan. I mean, the board still can look at the recommendation for the right reasons or the wrong reasons, and, you know, reject some or all of the, all of the plan.
I think if you hire a firm consultant to do the work at the full service, there'll be community interaction throughout the whole process. They'll bring that whole process to us, which will bring community input in at the appropriate times, so the community feels they've had a voice in the process, which is very, very important.
I agree with all of that and understand that. I guess for me, I'm struggling with, I think as a board, we need to decide from the outset what levels we're going to do.
From the contract point, yeah.
Yeah. Instead of saying, we know we have to do middle and we might do high school, and so we're gonna go through this process, and then at the end, we'll decide if we're gonna redistrict high school. I don't think that's fair, and that's, that's kind of what I'm hearing. That's what I'm hearing, that, that we might not, like, we could conceivably do both levels, but then, once we're through it, we might say, no, we won't do high school, we'll just do middle only.
I mean, I think you have to let a contract that states very clearly you're doing one level or two levels or three levels.
Okay.
But if you do high school, at the end of the day, if you redistrict high school, it's possible that the maps wouldn't be dramatically different. That's all I'm saying, is that, I mean, we don't know what they'll look like if we decide to do that.
It just depends on your criteria.
Exactly, sir.
Well, sure. And I think the other thing is, you get all the data together, you get the recommendations, and maybe you've decided, we're gonna do middle and high school. You get all the stuff together, you see where the maps are, and then you decide, you know what? I don't think we're ready to do high school yet. And if parents are, you know, if that's not fair to them, you know, I'm sorry, but we've come to a, you know, we're making a decision based on, and it's an informed decision. We've looked at all the information, and we decided that it's not, we don't need to redistrict the high schools quite as quickly as we're doing the middle school. And I think, you know, I just, that's part of, you know, I think, that's part of our job. That's, and I, I think you have to use the language, so it's not perceived as that, but we never, you know, when you start a process out, you never know exactly how it's gonna, that's gonna end up, how it's gonna finish. You know? And in all those processes, somebody's gonna be disappointed.
Well, unless you decide from the outset, like, like Mr. Kelly said, unless we decide that we're only gonna redistrict middle school.
Right.
That was my point. We can, we can make that decision and say, we're only going to do middle school.
Or not. So, for, just to make sure, again, we do not, Mrs. Taylor-
I agree with her.
Just reminded me, we don't have to make a decision tonight. So, you know, we do have time to discuss this again at our next meeting and so forth, but if I, if I'm just echoing back what I think I hear, there's no appetite to redistrict at the elementary school? Is that, is that a?
No.
No?
That's accurate.
Okay. Obviously, the middle school, and then the high school, there's not consensus on that yet. Is that?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any information that could be provided to you as board members to help you deliberate on the, on the high school? Is there any information you feel that you would benefit from?
I wouldn't mind having, maybe to Mr. Kelly's point about the fact that this might be just an aberration, some of these numbers, if there's some kind of an average, are we really looking at about an average of 10% of the kids at Tuana going on to Lafayette when 90% of, it looks like it's more like, boy, if you look at percentages, it's 5% or 4%. Maybe if I could get percentages, like an average percentage of the last five years. I feel for those kids. I think that's a little awkward for them. The other thing I would, and this is a little off topic, but it was the additional, the walk zones and safe routes to school. I would be interested in knowing, like, really how many middle school and high schoolers actually walk to school.
Yeah, that's gonna be very difficult.
No, but I do know there's, I think at the high school level, it is certainly more of an issue, particularly for students who play sports. The pathway's gone. But there are students who stay after school or for band or whatever, and they do, when they don't have cars, those first two years of high school, I know lots of students that do walk. And I go up and down Long Hill Road, and there's every morning, students walk into Lafayette. Every morning, students walk to Lafayette, and every afternoon, students walk home.
On a percentage basis?
I don't know, I don't, no, but I know that it's true. So I know that, I think at the high school level, walking, I would personally think it should be a criteria within walking distance at the high school level, because it allows flexibility for students who participate in after-school activities and don't want to stay and then ride the bus.
So, so walking?
Just, I'm just curious, like, how, okay. So you're talking about kind of the choice to walk, but I'm talking about, are there any students in middle school and high school that are so close that they're walking and there's no bus that picks them up?
Buses for, even at Seasons, even at Seasons Trace, there's buses that get kids to Lafayette. So just using that as an example, I don't know other neighborhoods that are close by, but-
I think we have to.
We have to.
We have to?
Yeah.
Oh, by law, we have to? So there's nobody, every single person is bused?
Yes.
Every single person has a bus that goes by their house?
Every single person has the-
Or near, near.
-ability to ride a school bus. And if they don't ride a school bus, it's their choice.
That is correct. Every single person has the opportunity to ride a school bus if they put in a request for bus transportation.
Okay.
And they, and, and that has to be every day, whether they get on the bus or not?
Correct.
That has to be every day, whether they get on the bus or not. So there's a lot of talk about our empty high school buses.
Yes.
We have to run those buses near there, near there, because that kid may get on that bus today.
And in addition, kids get off the buses, you don't know when, when you're seeing the bus, is it full or is it empty? So kids ride the bus, and some choose not to on some days, so.
Right.
We have to provide transportation if they request it.
Right. But my sense, generally, most kids in elementary school ride the bus.
Yes.
Half of them in high school ride the bus.
We have a high percentage of ridership in our elementary schools, of course, and I can get you those, we gave those a couple of years ago, but we can get you that ridership percentages.
Okay. Another thing, just along with that, is average bus time for students? I don't know if that's something that's hard to, you know, for example, this became an issue in the, two redistrictings ago, when people were saying, oh, I don't, I don't want my kid, I don't want to be bused to this school. I'm like, well, you're being bused to school A, and they're like, well, but I don't want to be bused to school B. It's so much further. I'm like, it really isn't so much further. Everybody's being picked up in one neighborhood, and you're going right down this road, and you're actually on the bus for less time than kids that are sometimes closer. So I think some of those arguments that I can envision coming up, it would be interesting to have that, that data.
We base our, we base our average ride time on when the first student picks up, till when that student gets off that stop. So an average ride time is 40 to 45 minutes, because your bell time is about an hour. So we try to give, get the kids there at least 10, 10 to 20, 15 minutes before the bell. So we try to get them there.
That's average, pretty much across?
Across the division, based on your bell time.
Even if you go to Matthew Waley School and you live in Kings Point?
Yes. We try to, average, average ridership.
It does, even if you live, like, literally, yeah, no, it, yeah.
Forty to 45 minutes ride.
Yeah, even if, yeah, even if you live next door to the school, it takes 45 minutes.
That's right, yeah.
Yes, it does.
So anyway, I'm just saying all that as kind of a preface to the people who will be coming, who will be saying, oh, I, you know, that, I don't want to go to that school, I want to go to this school, because I'm gonna be bused so much further. I'm like-
Mrs. Hummel, I believe one of the criteria used before was minimal bus travel or distance from the school, and that may be something the board wants to consider as a key criteria, that proximity to, to the school.
And we haven't even brought up start time.
Yeah, that's, that's in the agenda.
Yeah, but I didn't see it in her report.
No, that's, that's my, it's my job to bring that up. Okay, so I think if I heard everybody, they'd like to see a tiered price option, so one, one level or two levels in the RFP, and, or in whatever contract, but let me not say RFP, because we haven't had that conversation yet. So, so that maybe we can pick this up at the next meeting, after we've gotten this additional information, and, and then, and then talk about whether the administration wants to consider presenting to us two options, you know, in terms of pricing, so we can compare cost of doing one level versus the cost of doing two levels.
Yeah, I didn't ask for a tiered price option, I just think we should do middle.
Right.
Mrs. Hummel asked for some information. Can you get that? For the five, for the last five years, the kids that went from Tuana to, just want to make sure that we're not asking you for the impossible. I mean, that's, I think that's gonna be kind of tough for you to put together, just my thought.
It will be tough. I'm not sure how far we can go back. We're pushing in three different directions. There was about several people involved in putting the information together.
I mean, if it's too, you know, it's-
We could certainly get some information, and maybe, can we get a couple of years?
You got a couple of different student data systems you're digging into.
Honestly, this is a, and I don't know, but we will find out what we can find out.
Yeah.
We have from year to year what the next school is, but once we roll that to be the active year, I'm not sure if those leaks are broken.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that, I appreciate Mrs. Hummel's request for the information, I just want to make sure she, we understand how much effort's required to put that together, and then we really kind of figure out if we really want that, depending upon how hard it is to put together.
I'll, I'll check with staff tomorrow morning and get an answer to Dr. Heron on whether or not it's possible.
Okay, and I, thank you, I appreciate that, but it's just really as a reaction to you saying, saying, hey, it could be two, it could be 25, so.
Welcome to redistricting.
Yeah, I, I've been through it.
Not in the side of the table yet.
So, talking about the tiered, which I think, I mean, I certainly would like to see the cost of doing one level versus two, and, because I still am not, I'm still processing the idea of middle, of a high school. But then, another item that was in this document that Dr. Heron provided to us was the idea of what type of consultant do we want, a full-service or not a full-service, you know, more GIS-based? And then also, do we want to use a cooperative contract or an RFP? So, an RFP affords us the opportunity to customize, and then the full service provides that opportunity for community feedback and also perhaps advice and consultation. But I throw that out for you all, because I, you know, I know some, some people have expressed an interest in more of a GIS approach, so can we maybe have a conversation that provides some feedback to staff so they can see their thinking about how to proceed on that front?
It'd be nice to know the cost difference between that. Because I know, what did we put in the budget?
Hundred and fifty.
So like, if the full service comes back and it's like $500,000, well, there's our answer.
I think that's the value of the RFP process, because we can put price as one of the criteria, and then we can choose, we can choose an option based on that, because we know we have a limited budget set aside for it.
So, Dr. Heron, if you can answer this, with the last redistricting, did we, we had, we had the committee, so that was not full service? Did we just do GIS last?
The committee was two redistrictings ago.
Okay, so-
Community task force.
That's right. So, but have we ever used full service in the division?
I would have to ask one of our historical members of Cabinet, tell us. Mr. Schnipes, are you aware of what we used last time, Mr. Landers?
He wasn't where he is right now in the last time.
Yeah, yeah.
It wasn't full service, no.
Yes, it was, no.
I can tell you that.
It was, yeah.
Okay. So we always just, historically, we've used the maps and then some combination of community task force and school board.
And, you know, I think that there are people out there who are experts in this, and, you know, I want to be able to turn to someone and say, you know, when a school board uses this criteria, what's, you know, what's the result, or what's your recommendation on that? And to get an honest, professional, experienced opinion. Because I think there's no shortage of criteria we could use. Some criteria that we've used in the past is unusual and not, not typical in other redistricting. So I think we can get that feedback and then, and maybe perhaps prevent some of the heartache that Mr. Kelly refers to, and the tumult, if we're, if we're getting that. Because having watched a not-full-service consultant that was really limited to mapping, I think that there's a consultation gap there. And there are firms that do this all over the country and are used to advising boards, and to avoid those pitfalls, you know, to your point, Mr. Kelly.
You'll hear, you'll hear from lots of experts as you go into redistricting. And the criteria is, is, is one thing, but it also is on your demographics. So the criteria will, the criteria with your demographics gets you a result. The same criteria with a different demographics will get you a different result. So, so it's not, not to say, well, what's, what is this criteria gonna do? It's gonna be that criteria associated with your current, your specific demographics, and how does that work? So it's, it's a complicated equation with lots of different answers.
Right. But I would presume a firm could come in and take into account the fact that we're a long, skinny district that has major arteries with cul-de-sac neighborhoods, with large developments, with minimal entrances, not built on a grid, with economic segregation, and be able to, you know, our housing patterns are economically segregated, and be able to take all that into account and present to us something that's, that's reasonable, because they've done it before, probably in multiple districts.
I think that the first redistricting back in 2007 was along the lines of a full service, because they were the ones that came in, it was De Jong, and they came in and they were the ones that set up the citizen task force, set up the surveys, you know, it was like a full-service consulting kind of thing with the GIS along with it, and all the different iterations that you were talking, we had, if it's, if this is our first priority and this is our second priority of the criteria, they would weight the criteria, and then they did all of the, the maps accordingly. I think if we, if we could do it in RFP process where we limit what we ex-
if we, if we could do it in RFP process where we limit what we ex, we expect the, the experts to do, um, you know, and, and define, I mean, really define what it is that we want them to do, maybe that would work out.
Well, I'll accept that.
Hmm?
Accept that. When that organization did come up with its recommendation, a number of school board members rejected it because they didn't like the composition of some of the schools. And so, um, a lot, some or all of it was tossed. And they, and the board decided how they were going to redistrict. And that's what led to the, just a real public outcry over, uh, why cer- certain schools seem to be favored over other schools. And it's, I will tell you, it's still out in that community. They, they haven't, you know, that's, everybody knows that redistricting is coming up and, um, those who were around then, who still have kids in the school systems, um, they weren't happy then. They're over it now, but they, they hope that we don't go through that same thing again.
Dr. Heron, do you want to talk to the board a little bit about cooperative contract versus RFP? Um, just what might be available?
Yeah, basically, obviously, if we decide to go out on an RFP, it's a competitive process. We would go out and, uh, seek a vendor and say, we want you to be able to do this, this and this, and come in with a price and describe exactly what you're going to offer. We would have a, an administrative committee that would look at all of those and select a vendor to bring toward, to the board for your selection, but at least it's, it's a competitive process. There are a couple of cooperative contracts out there that have been used by other systems that we can jump on, jump on and use. Um, I'm not sure how that impacts. I presume we can still give them some direction as to how much we'd want to use of their services. Within that, one we think might work for us, the other one we're not so sure about because of the, the results of the school system. So, there is one cooperative contract, um, which is a faster process, doesn't mean it's a better process, could be less expensive, but we really don't know until we would ask.
Do you have any pro, would you have any recommendations for the election to go? Cooperative versus RFP?
Depends what you want and to what extent, what scope that you're looking at. They both have advantages and disadvantages.
The firm of the, um, that is, and the cooperative contract, they could bid on an RFP, correct?
Sure, yeah.
Any other comments on the cooperative contract or what's out there or?
I think that's basically, it's just a preference, really.
So, is it possible to get some cost information without giving more guidance than we're giving now?
Yes, we could go out and request information, but you can't really, you don't usually request cost in that.
What did the finance lady say?
She's shaking her head, yeah.
It's, not really.
Unfortunately, in this type of scenario, that would not be a possibility. That would be a request for quote situation in which you wouldn't be able to define criteria. You would basically ask a company to either come in, do full service or GIS services for you, and then you would have to accept, sort of like an IFB process, the lowest quote. Um, I think for our purposes, we need to know from you, um, whether you're comfortable with utilizing a cooperative or whether you want the specificity to define your criteria. The advantage of a cooperative is it's a shorter timeline. The disadvantage of an RFP is once we define that scope, it has to be issued for thirty days before we can even begin the decision process. So, there are advantages and disadvantages of each. Um, and we certainly can help guide that decision, but that's a decision we need your help in making.
Is, is it difficult to find out what we paid back in two thousand and seven for De Jong?
I can try to do some research on that. I can probably look back through minutes with Ms. Serza and see if we can figure that piece out. We're not on the same financial system anymore, so I don't know how far back, um, because we're only required to keep records for five years, but that doesn't mean that that's not in the minutes.
She's like Kitty taking all the fun out of this.
Given the timeline that's before us, are you, can, does the RFP process give you pause in terms of timeline, or do you feel like we've got wiggle room?
We count, the budget's not available until July, so, you can't, we can't, we could, we can't go out and get a cooperative contract just like that.
You can't issue anything until July.
No, so.
I mean, I, I think if your, if your direction is to go in an RFP process, that gives us time to begin developing your scope without a rushed process, um, so we can begin framing those conversations and figuring out, um, what criteria we want to incorporate into an RFP. We certainly could push that out sooner than July first if we knew what our scope was, with the understanding that we wouldn't award until we got the budget approved in July. So, there are some opportunities there based on direction and desire of the board.
Any response to that? No.
I like the RFP process. I think, I think it works best for us.
I, I do too.
Okay. So, um, then if we're going to give guidance to the administration on the RFP, which may have a tiered response to it in terms of price, um, do we have a sense of, um, full service versus GIS? Do we need more information? Is there anything, any more information on, uh, about either one of those that, that the administration could get to us to help our, inform our thinking?
Ken, is there any research that's out there for redistricting, you know, that, that a full service costs the, the school district that's similar to us, so much money? I mean, any?
We can, we can probably try to provide some information on the differences in cost. The disadvantage of just the mapping and GIS is we lose the, all of the communications process, the, the input opportunities for community. There's a whole process that they would take us through and actually facilitate a lot of those meetings on our behalf.
Yeah.
So, we would lose out that whole interaction with the, the public formally done by an expert.
Last time, but the most recent one, we did not have that, is that correct?
I don't think so.
Jim, you were there.
Four months.
Four months, come on.
When I got there, the, the, they handed me the maps and said, here you go.
Yeah.
Um, all the community input was prior to that in the fall.
So, there was community input, it was just?
Well, there was definitely community input. There were definitely maps put up in, on easels.
Oh, yeah, riots, the whole deal.
Yeah, riots, the whole deal, yeah. I don't know that there was a consultant there.
Right, no.
No.
There was community input, there's always been community input, but I don't, I don't recall consultants facilitating it.
Yeah, um, right. So, what, what I, what appeals to me about full service is, again, that expertise that comes with that. And, um, you know, I think we recently, as a board, decided to, um, go, um, with a full service approach in, in going through a search for our superintendent. Um, and, and I think that served us well. Um, and so, that's part of what, um, and the, 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 um, expertise and the value added there. Um, I would anticipate getting the same sort of value added, um, with that, because what I'd like to avoid is a situation that Dr. Beer sort of talked about, which is something's presented and then it's not, then it's, um, tweaked or altered to the point where it's not, it's no longer the consultant's recommendation. Um, and at the end of the day, um, it's this job, this board's job to, you know, things are, the administration or the consultant's supposed to recommend and we're supposed to approve or not approve, um, but not necessarily craft. And so, I, I, um, I think that a consultant that has had experience at, at the full service level, working with boards, is more likely to take our feedback, take the public's feedback, and present options to us that we are able to accept or, you know, reject or choices. I think as long as, like you said, they get a little bit of education about our uniqueness because, um, the consultant from the first one that we worked with, they, they did a lot of redistricting and the things that were just kind of, um, whether it was.
Colonial heritage?
Colonial heritage. There were certain things that they, that they, that they did that they really clearly did not know our community. Um, and so, there were some examples of that. Um. So, I, I think in the RFP, perhaps, um, you know, interviews with key staff members in Ops Department with.
Mm-hmm.
With Dr. Heron, with perhaps board members, so that, that they could, their work can be informed by the.
Yeah.
Because we do have, you know, unique geographic and built, built environment.
Yeah.
That impacts, and, and our schools are not, and they're in, you know, not necessarily, they're in odd places in some cases, yeah.
So, was the board in favor of full service or just mapping, GIS?
I am.
I am.
Yeah.
For sure that.
Okay, okay.
Within a hundred and fifty thousand.
Will be one of the, price will be one of the criteria that we write into the RFP.
Right, okay.
And I, I think I heard the board also say, would we go out on an RFP, that we would want to ask for pricing options depending on the extent of the redistricting as well? And we'd want them to delineate two prices or three depending on options.
I think two, yeah. Did we say two?
Just middle or middle and, middle and high?
Middle and, middle and high, yeah.
Is that the consensus of the board as well?
No.
No?
Yeah, they're, they're all, the consensus is middle.
I'm not sure. We're not, we're not voting, so.
No, no.
I'm not sure.
Just having consensus to have the option. Um, okay, is there, um, any other discussion about redistricting specifically before we jump into Dr. Beer's favorite topic of start times? Anything else? Anything else? No? It was just under the section about the criteria itself, and I, I had something, previous rezoning under E that, to me, seemed not applicable. Um, because if we're doing middle, if we are doing middle school, previous rezoning was how many years ago? It doesn't really.
Oh, thank you.
Apply. Um, well, we just rezoned middle school in two thousand and ten. We just did it, yeah. Right. So, anyway, that was just mine. And then the administration's recommendation did not include, um, the, uh, district-wide balance in ethnic and socioeconomic diversity, and that is important to me as a board member. I'm not sure what the consensus is for the rest of the board, but that is a, a pretty important, um, criteria for me. Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely interested in learning more about economic integration and its impact on, school attendance zones' impact on that. I am, and, and very interested in, in that and would like to, at some point, discuss it as a board and see if that is something that we want to include as criteria. Okay, start times? Mr. Kelly, you want to start off with start? Um, all right, I'll, I'll start. Um, I, I believe that we need to shift start times. Um, I think that the research is clear that starting school as early as we do in high school is not good for the health of our students. That said, um, I think, um, it would be, um, unnecessarily tumultuous to do that prior to redistricting. Um, as much as I'd like that to start tomorrow, um, I just think we have to get through this process first, which is part of why I think that we have, we should do high school and middle school at the same time, or, um, but anyway, I just thought I would throw that out there because in December, we agreed to bring this back in April, so it's back. The question is, do we want to grapple with it now or?
I don't think we can until we know where students are going to be bussed to and I, I.
Well, I, I, you know, I brought it up before and I, I, my feeling is, um, this has been tossed around for well over ten years, and it's either the board really supports it or the board does not support it. And I think, you know, just going around and around and around, we've had different things come up every single year for the last ten years. We've built new schools, we've done this, we've done that. And it's just, my feeling is, you know, if the board doesn't want to do it, it doesn't want to do it. So, that's my, that's my feeling about it.
Again, with the high school start times, the, the research is clear, although we don't live in a laboratory and there's unintended consequences. So, if we, if we start school later, um, those students that work after school and contribute to the family income can't do that, so do they drop out? So, does our dropout rate increase? If we start school earlier, that has the elementary kids catching the bus earlier. So, let's, let's, let's not, let's understand that the elementary kids will be catching the bus. Most of the elementary kids catch the bus, so if they're out there at seven o'clock in the morning, um, in the dark and the cold, um, you could potentially put those kids at a higher risk than the high school kids, where only half of them catch the bus anyway, so you have fewer kids on the streets in the early hours. So, there's, there's a lot to this equation. Every time we ask our, our students, they say, yeah, start earlier. And they start thinking about it, and they're like, you know what, I think we're good. And so, you know, I, I just don't, this, this is a much more complicated question than the pediatrics they use, because every, every college in the world has an eight o'clock class. Every college student doesn't want those eight o'clock classes, but they go to them anyway. So, I mean, it's the, the, you know, and you would think that the colleges would have the easiest shot at changing their start times and just moving their start times to nine o'clock, ten o'clock, but they don't. They have eight o'clock start times. So, um, it's a very complicated question, um, has a lot of impacts beyond just the high school kid catching the bus at nine fifteen and, you know, you have the elementary kids, you have the middle school students who we're not talking about changing, who are also teenagers who want to start later. It's, it's, the reason why we haven't done anything for ten years is it's a much more complicated question than the American pediatric saying, yeah, they got to start at ten o'clock.
Well, I, I respectfully disagree with some of those points.
But to Mr. Kelly's point too.
I'm sorry.
It's, it's.
I interrupted you.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't know you were speaking, go ahead, sorry.
But we have, we have to consider, it's a regional impact too. It's, it's not a laboratory, so we do have to, we have to look at what the region is doing. It's not just WJCC because it does impact after-school activities, sports, bands, choir. Um, I think that has been a stopping point time and time again as well.
Somehow, Enrico, Chesterfield, lots of, uh, uh, almost all of Fairfax County, many other school districts around the country, they have kids who work, Jim. Somehow, they managed to, uh, they managed to, to do it, and, and it's not the pediatric, they're, they're not the ones that are talking about that. It's the counselors, it's the, it's the people that are working with high school kids who sleep through the first period on a regular basis because it starts so early. Um, and but, I, I, you know, I keep coming back to it. Um, you can, you know, there are just as many counter arguments and, and if those outweigh the ones in support of it, then my, I'll just throw my hands up and say, hey, go ahead, you know, you don't want to do it, don't do it. But I don't, I don't want to just keep saying we need to study, it needs a lot more studying. We could have studied a fraction of this every year for the last ten years and could have ended up with, who knows, an incredible, um, start time system, but, um, the last time it came up, and I know, I know the former superintendent brought it up, um, I went back and listened to the, uh, the video, watched the video of the comments by board members, and they weren't professional comments at all. It was, it was due to one kid or this kid or, or, you know, my, um, so I, um, I don't want to spend my time on it if, if the majority of the board, who doesn't, you know, doesn't care about it. That's my feeling.
Um, I went to the NSBA conference last year and actually went to a fascinating discussion from Fairfax County on what it took to change the start times of the school. And, uh, basically, it, it takes an upswelling of community pressure that, that are, they are just bound and determined that it needs to change, and we do not have that ground swell of community pressure here. of community pressure here because when you look at what Fairfax County had to do in order to make that change happen, it was an extremely expensive option.
And how much did they change start times?
They changed after, I think, no, I think it was fifteen minutes or twenty minutes. It was a twenty-minute change and cost millions, literally millions of dollars for a fifteen-minute to twenty-minute adjustment in the times.
Well, and they didn't solve the middle schools because the middle schools start at the crack of dawn.
Yeah, so anyway, I think we don't have that ground swell of community pressure right now, just just going, you know, we need to and so I think that's why it has been going around and going around and going around because there are no easy, something gives. You do this, something's hurting over here, so and it's expensive. And we don't have the money that Fairfax has, but that's.
More than the rest of us.
We don't get paid.
Less wealthy school systems have done.
I know, I know. I'm just saying, I know, but I I'm just saying, I think it takes community, a really like community coming down.
I think we heard that same presentation by Fairfax County what the year before, didn't we?
Ms. Taylor?
Some perspective from our WJCC student leaders. If you guys recall, last year the Student Advisory Committee spoke with those students and, you know, they were able to bring up, yes, we'd like to sleep later and the circadian rhythms and and all of that, but then they, like Mr. Kelly said, they were like, wait a minute, I'm not going to be able to do the before-school practices, childcare is going to be interrupted for my younger siblings, I won't be able to have that after-school job, so these are things that that keep coming up with that conversation.
I mean, I I think some of the I wonder if if thinking about redistricting in this way may with that in mind maybe makes it easier to get to fewer tiers so that it's not it's not putting the little kids out or it's not putting the middle schoolers out so that nothing starts in the seven o'clock hour, but that may be. I asked Dr. Heron to see if any school division had combined those issues and I think the answer was no.
Certainly haven't found any yet. I think one of the things in consideration of this is how much change do you want to bring to the system at once and how much can the community cope with in terms of redistricting, start times? I see the connection and Ms. Cook and I have talked about it, there is a connection, but I'm not sure how much we want to negotiate at one time in one community.
So what is the will of the board on this topic? I don't think I'm interested in dropping it, but to your, you know, I understand that there is, you know, no ground swell, but I certainly don't think it's realistic to talk about it until redistricting is done.
Yes.
Okay, so add it to the list of delays, Jim.
I don't care.
Okay.
I really don't care.
Okay. Anything else on either topic? Well, thank you all for the good discussion. That brings us to item eight point zero one, revised policy EB School Crisis and Emergency Management Plan. Mrs. Taylor, Dr. Heron.
We just added in that drills will be conducted at all WJCC schools and facilities per state code. So if Mr. Kelly is happy now, we can.
Mr. Kelly is happy.
Any other questions or comments on that? If not, we'll add that to the consent agenda? Mr. Kelly would like to vote on that.
Might change if I go in.
Do you want us to note that and you want us to footnote that?
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Consider you a data source in board docs. Okay, nine point zero one Personnel Actions, can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the personnel actions as presented this evening.
Second? Any discussion? Personnel actions have been moved and seconded. Sersa, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Onby?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Personnel actions pass. Item nine point zero two, release from compulsory attendance case number R seventeen dash zero four, can I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the release from compulsory attendance case R seventeen dash oh four.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Sersa, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Onby?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
The board approves release from compulsory attendance for case R seventeen dash zero four. Item ten point zero one, board members member comments. Dr. Beers?
I really don't have anything else to say. I saw what I said about the meeting in WHRO. I actually, I understand the National School Board Association had a an excellent conference out in Denver, Colorado. You learned a lot and I'm sure hope that you all enjoyed yourselves too.
Ms. Onby?
Yes, to Dr. Beers' point, I did have an opportunity to attend the NSBA conference for the first time and it was a lot of information in a very short amount of time. So I attended seven sessions and two general sessions, learned a lot about board governance and best practice, self-evaluation, standard operating procedures, and so I shared all that information with each of you. I attended sessions on the school-to-prison pipeline where I learned that the data that was presented last summer was was totally wrong and so Virginia is not as bad as we thought we were. So we are like around three point three percent. Yeah, the faculty at Virginia Tech, it was data collection error. Yeah, data collection error. Also learned more about school equity and school discipline, saw some really cool exhibits. The most exciting one many of us got to get in it was the Portable Planetarium. I think WJCC needs a Portable Planetarium, thirty thousand dollars. Madam Chair thinks we can find a community foundation to fund it. It would fit in the gym of any one of our fifteen schools. It was the best thing ever. I have the DVD, I will share it with Dr. Heron.
It's pretty neat.
It was cool. And then also Julie, Ms. Hummel and I found through the University of Maryland, a foreign language, they had to grant some grant money to expand summer foreign language opportunities and so we'll share that with Mr. Paula as well. So they had a pot of money and they were like, we have money. So I'll do some research.
Have money.
Yeah, well, and we'll explore that as well. And then just wanted to remind the community that the Special Education Advisory Committee is meeting this Thursday at six thirty at the REC Center. It is open to the public and the guest speaker this Thursday session is from William Mary School of Ed, Professor Hartley Huber, whose body of research is on collaborative relationships and inclusive settings. So I'm really excited to hear the research and so would encourage folks, if you have time, to go, so thank you very much.
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I think I think the testimony you hear on the on the NSBA conference is really, it's a lot like work. There's a lot of lot of sessions to go to and I think I think it's very beneficial for the board members to go to those, talk to other other board members from other 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 places in the country and understand that maybe we have some problems, but whoo, glad I don't have your problems because those are pretty impressive. But yeah, I I as well enjoyed several of the sessions I went to and got a lot of benefit from them. The only thing, being April, starting to turn into May, which turns into June pretty quickly, we have a lot of end-of-the-year events and festivities come coming up. One of my most favorite, Fiddler on the Roof at Lafayette the weekend of April twenty-second, I believe it's nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. And then the War Hill musical is in the first part of May, so we have time to talk about that a little bit later. So, you know, a lot of a lot of those end-of-the-year events, retirement ceremonies, teacher-of-the-year ceremonies and those types of things coming up that are always a pleasure to attend.
Hummel, I mean, Ms. Hummel, sorry.
I'll answer to anything.
Like Dr. Olin.
Yeah, except for that. I also want to just talk real briefly about the NSBA conference. I attended seven sessions, two of the and two of the, they're called the general sessions and really did get a lot out of it. Some of the sessions I went to were on parliamentary procedure and best practices for school board meetings and so I've sent those suggestions to the board and we can maybe talk about those in our retreat when we talk about updating our SOPs. I will, I sent Dr. Heron the actual printout from the session that Ms. Onby and I went to on the school-to-prison pipeline and it has all of the documentation about how they proved that the data was incorrectly codified. But what was also interesting that came out of that session is that Virginia does have a problem with implicit bias. There is a problem in our state and in probably every school system where regardless of whether we realize it or not, minority students and special ed students are being treated differently when it comes to disciplinary action. And the best practice recommendations is to do kind of training on implicit bias, training on on how your school system, all of these school systems in the state of Virginia, and they've got the data really to prove that you may you may think you're not biased, but somehow the data is proving that we are indeed biased. So I've got a lot, oh, okay, you're not in here.
No.
Yeah, so I've got great data that I shared with Dr. Olin. He is a, Dr. Heron, he is a professor at Virginia Tech and he, I think, would actually be a great person to maybe do an in-service and have, I know, thank you, I'm gonna, I just think that it would be a very important session for all the teachers to hear about this and that's that's about it.
And Madam Chair, if I could just add on to Ms. Hummel too, one of the sessions that I went to was presented by the superintendent from Virginia Beach Public Schools and and that was exactly what their division has gone through, so was looking at implicit bias. And so he also is local and another resource and provided very similar data and was able to, you know, overlay maps on top of the schools that weren't accredited and correlated that to free and reduced lunch numbers and then implicit bias within their schools and has watched their numbers drastically come down in terms of suspensions and expulsions.
And different creative ways to handle discipline problems, so.
Yeah.
Mrs. Taylor?
Just to echo what what all the other board members have talked about, NSBA was a great opportunity. They have so many different workshops on different topics from cultivating mindfulness to encouraging student leadership and improving board superintendent relations, so, you know, it just runs the gamut and it was it was a great experience and many of us have already shared or will be sharing, myself, the takeaways from the event with one another, so.
Thank you. Mrs. Taylor and I will be shortly sharing our information from NSBA, but it was a very wonderful professional development opportunity, so I wanted to welcome everybody back from spring break. I'm sure everyone's delighted to be back and start the fourth quarter of the year. It's amazing. I wanted to comment that the week prior to spring break, I had the opportunity to be invited to participate in an activity hosted by the LEED Historic Triangle class of two thousand and seventeen. That's a leadership program sponsored by the Greater Williamsburg Chamber and Tourism Alliance and there, the event they hosted was the culminating event for a project that they did with students at Lafayette High School and so they took the about a dozen Lafayette students through a leadership curriculum, about eight-week class, and toured the community and then each the class members broke up into teams of three and developed a project and participated in a shark tank kind of experience. And and so they each each team was supposed to pick a problem and then develop a solution and then pitch the solution and I got to serve as one of the three judges and they the group, one group picked healthy eating, active living as as an issue and has agreed to next year start Health and Wellness Club at Lafayette, so and they had worked out a lot of details and worked with the school nurse and so I think they're going to make health and wellness cool, which, you know. Actually, one group wanted to end poverty. Yeah, so that was pretty amazing and they talked about helping students, expose students to different career opportunities that they may not otherwise be exposed to. And then the winning idea was to work with Dominion, Virginia Dominion Power to light the dark streets in James City County, which then. It was unanimous. It was unanimous. But anyway, so these students went out and took pictures of what it's like to stand in a on a street at six AM and 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 it's very dark and so they want to light the streets to make it safer, so and work with VDOT and Virginia Power to do that, to install solar lights, so. Mr. Hill, who was also, Mr. Brian Hill, who was also a judge, was intrigued by that and so who knows what that'll lead to. Yesterday was the first of five meetings hosted by James City County on their budget and it was a public public meeting, a kind of a town hall and Mr. Kelly and I attended and that was pretty well-attended and just an opportunity for citizens to provide feedback on the on the budget of which the schools are a large part, as you know. Thank you for the update on the Pathways Award. That's quite an honor, very exciting. And then the last thing I wanted to just say is that my thoughts and prayers are with the North Park Elementary Community in San Bernardino after yesterday's tragedy. I think all of us and school boards around the country are are thinking about that community and wishing them well. Anyway, with that, are there any other comments?
I have one.
Yes?
If you're interested, if you go back to the March twenty-five, twenty-ten minutes of the school board, you will see the redistricting, a discussion of the redistricting process that took place back in twenty-ten, if you're interested.
That brings us to item eleven point zero one, upcoming events. The Policy Committee meets on the nineteenth of this month in room three oh nine here in the annex at four PM. The Twenty-First Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee meets on April twenty-fifth at four PM in room one oh eight of the School Board Central Office. And the Teacher of the Year Ceremony is on the twenty-sixth of April at five fifteen at the William Mary School of Education. And item one eleven point zero two, upcoming meetings next week on the eighteenth of April, we have a closed session beginning at actually five thirty, not six, in the Stryker Center. And and then we'll have our regular meeting beginning at six thirty in City Council Chambers on the eighteenth. And then our work session in May is on the second of May, closed session begins at? Dr. Heron, on the second, do we want, is that closed session starting at six PM on May second? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, in room three oh nine here at the annex and then the work session to follow at six thirty here in room three hundred, so. Okay. Item twelve point zero one, agendas, items are set for the regular meeting. We've been through everything in the proposed agenda items. We've put a policy in consent and something else in consent that I can't find right now. And then we'll hear, we'll continue the redistricting conversation based on any additional information that administration will provide us and then, of course, our monthly bills and payroll and I think we have some resolutions, teacher appreciation week, school nurse appreciation and school nutrition, among others perhaps, but anyway, so that sets that and then with that, I will adjourn the meeting.